Welcome, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. I'd just like to do a roll call attendance to make sure we have a quorum. Mr. Niles?
Yeah.
And Liz Cunningham?
Here.
Mr. Gitzner?
Here.
Mr. Seaman?
Yeah.
Myself, Sean, and the speaker here. We are five zero. We have our quorum. And I'd just like to get a motion to open our work session.
I'll make a motion.
Your intention. One, thank you. It's 6:45 PM. Okay, all of us in favor? Motion passes five zero. Okay. If you'd just please stand for a quick second.
My allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, foundation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Just a few comments first to those that are watching us live. We are following social distancing rules. We have our masks. We are seven feet apart, I think, is what they measure us out to be. And I think that's it to cover that piece. Okay, so, thank you. And we're here tonight to discuss the two vacant seats. And we, the board, had an opportunity to speak with counsel during our last executive session, and they informed us of all of our options. We were, we offered Mr. Niles a seat at that time, and we understand and respect your decision. But what I will do, for the sake of the community and public that are watching, is just go over again what our options are, and then we'll have our discussion. So, okay. So, educational law allows us to do a few things. One would be to not fill up the seats, either seat one or the other, and it would just stay vacant if we did that until the next election. There are countermeasures to that. There could be, for example, a taxpayer could bring to the commissioner's attention that, you know, we are a seven-member board. They would like us to maintain a seven-member board. And the commissioner could, in fact, force us to have a special election. But in the meantime, if that were to come, we could then just fill the seats before they even happened. So, some issues with not filling seats. We could hold a special election. It would need to be held within 90 days of, well, the first vacancy, which would have been June 13th. And so therefore by September 13th. And there would also be notices and timelines that would have to be adhered to to make that happen. In addition to considering the cost of helping hold an election in today's climate, I don't have the exact number, but I believe it was around $30,000 to send the mailings, the pre-postage paid, with just the magnitude of it. It's likely we'd have to follow the same protocol. And there's no, we would have to possibly even get a governor ruling on signatures in this type of situation in terms of candidates running and how to get signatures or not. So there's issues with that as well. The other option is that we, as a board, can appoint someone, and the board, the current board, is allowed to decide in that process. So that could be some of the things that could be considered. We could do it outright. We could just choose people to fill the seats at our own discretion. We could, for example, have people submit interest statements formally to the board through some sort of formal process, and then we could choose among those statements. Or we could hold an interview process. Again, we could, depending on how many we get of interest statements, we could choose a certain number and interview those. We could interview them all. We essentially do have discretionary oversight on how we appoint someone if we do that. So that'll, those are, will be the options that we can discuss. And...
Can I just add something?
Please.
For the special, the second option, which would be to hold a special election, if we were to do that, one person would be elected to the two-year term remaining on Krista's board seat, and one person would be elected to a one-year term, like left on.
The remainder, yes, correct.
And then for the appointment process, if we appoint someone or two people, they are only appointed for this year, and then they have to run.
So, yes, so the, if we appoint someone, the appointment would actually expire with the election, with the next election. So let's just say it was May 20th. Sometimes it's like the 19th, whatever that date is, right? So it would actually expire with the election. And at that point, what would happen? Let's just say we were to fill both seats through some sort of interview process or something, and both, both terms expire May 20th. Let's say that's the date. What would happen is technically, there's still, the school year goes until June 30th. So what happens is when the election happens and the results come in, there are technically four seats available, because next year's a three-seat year. So the person who, the candidate who runs and gets the most votes would actually, would get their three-year term plus six weeks. And that six weeks would start with the election results. So they would be sworn in immediately and finish out till June 30th, and then essentially get sworn in again at our reorganization meeting in July. And that would be for Danny's seat.
Right.
To finish off his, his six weeks is what it's about. It's assigned to Danny's seat, finishing off that. Krista's seat, which has a remainder of a year, goes to the person who would acquire the fourth-most votes. So the person who receives the second-most votes and the third-most votes, they get three-year terms. They start with the reorganization meeting in July. The person who gets the fourth-most votes would essentially be taking Krista's seat plus the six weeks. So therefore, they would be sworn in immediately at the time of the election with those results, and then complete the final year through June 30th, because they were voted into the roll.
Okay.
Okay?
And then the people who come in second and third don't start until July, which is what we normally do.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
And just because we don't have microphones, I'm not sure how the sound is. So hopefully, okay, looks good, okay. Yes.
The special, back to the special election. The, that September 13th, is that going to apply for both positions? Or is it Danny's resignation, he has a separate date, doesn't he?
He does, but, so the rule is it's within 90 days within.
Right.
So technically, while there would be, I think, additional time for Danny's, we could do them both, because it's within a 90-day period.
Right, and we're not right, too.
Right, so we could look forth both at the same time, because the songs are following within the 90 days, which they would.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think, just to sure.
So is there a legal expectation? That's not the right word, but for us to be a seven-person board, like?
So right now, we are a seven-person board. And that's, it goes through the state. It has this whole process to change that. So we are currently obligated to a seven-person board. To change that, there are many, many layers and steps to do such a thing, and it ultimately takes many years. And that kind of, it happens through attrition and over time. So to change something like that would need to go to a public vote to begin with. The community at large would have a say in what number of board we should be. And that wouldn't happen until the next election. We'd have to put forth, we'd have to agree to that, or the community would have to put forth a petition to do that. There's legal steps to that as well. It's a very big formal legal process to engage, because we are established in Brewster as a seven-person board with the state. And so if that changed, then again, it still doesn't happen right away. If we were made a seven-person board, if we wanted to do this immediately, it would still be two years down the road before we'd even enter five people or six people or whatever. And then it would take time to become that. And then you have to think about the fact that we're on cycles, three years. With that transition, there's many more steps involved in that as well. I mean, I can go through all the details, it's quite lengthy.
No.
But for this discussion today, since we are a seven-person board, we need to kind of work with what we're required to do today for these purposes, which is to consider filling the seats or not, and how we would do that. And if that's a conversation the board wants to have at another date, we could, we could have another work session. We're at it towards school board agenda and engage in that discussion. But that's not an agenda for tonight, wasn't noticed that way. So we can't discuss that tonight.
So, no, my follow-up question would then be that as long as we're sitting here, it's just five of us, and we still are operating as a seven-person, we're just assuming that we are seven people with two absences. So our quorum doesn't change, our majority doesn't change. None of those things change. It's still out of seven, even if there's only five of us currently served.
Yeah. So there's, you know, we could, I mean, to maybe make it easier, we could take something off the list. Do you want to consider perhaps the holding a special election first? Is anyone interested in considering holding a special election within that 90-day period?
I would say that's the first one I cross off the list because of the cost. I mean, I could not possibly justify another $30,000 election.
Plus there's too many unknowns.
A lot of unknowns.
In person absentee.
Right.
It's a number of sedentaries, number of access to voting issues. I mean, the president's, we probably don't have access.
Right.
But the people are going to be, who knows? If something turns out, we don't have access to the buildings since September, there's no, really no way to pull off a special election.
The only thing I would counter that with is, I'm not talking about one seat, we're talking about two seats. So unless the next conversation is leaving them open, we're potentially looking to, and we've had, I think, some, at least there's significant interest. Nobody's, I don't, I don't know what the process is, but I don't think we're going to end up with two people for two seats. So that would mean that without an election, it comes, that's not necessarily a deal breaker, but I think it's something to consider.
But we're not going to have two people for two seats.
So we're not, I don't think we're going to end up with two, because we're filling two.
So we're going to have to pick.
We're going to have to be choosing.
Oh, correct, yes.
And we're going to have to be leaving a lot of people out. And so if it was one seat, I see it, but now with two seats, I think there is, to me, it's probably a little more of a valid consideration to think about doing an election, because it's, if it's, if we get five people, six people for two seats, like, that's not, we're just going to pick somebody and just, you know, be here for the year, and that will be it. Like, it becomes, it's sort of, it's a significant number of people.
I hear what you're saying on that. But then I think I, what I would say to the counter to that is it's one year. We would be appointing people for one year.
For less than 10 and a half months, two months.
And then they are going to have to run.
That must be a long time.
It is, considering.
Spending 30K, I think it's, I just think it's too, too much. I just think it's too much.
Why not, is there?
You know, I think if you're looking at this, I'm looking at, you know, possibly three. Number one, I think is definitely out of the question in my view. I think we don't, we can't sit here and not consider filling the seats. To be honest with you, especially based off of what we're coming off and what we're giving away. So, but at the same time, you don't want to spend another 30K for an election that, as you said, 10 months. And I do understand what you're saying, that 10 months can be very lengthy in this world that we're in. But I think it really comes down to, in my view, we need to evaluate and consider appointing to be there.
And I'll just, real quick on last thing. If we do the special election, however, the two-year term, you finish the term. You only have to get elected once within the term. So that person, if we did a special election, they would not be up for to be a participant in next year's election. So we won't get two years out of one of these.
Right.
Because there's one year slot open and then two years.
Right.
So it's not just two people for 10 months, it's one for 10 months, one for two years.
One for two.
So I'll just add to the information that y'all have. Ironically, I, when I first ran, I was actually appointed in March prior to me running that May and then July officially. Two people had resigned that year also, for different reasons. And I think one person moved out of Tanner State, and the other one went on to the legislative legislature. And so they were down to five people also. They chose to only fill one seat, because they were so close to the election. They held interviews. I'm not sure if I recall, there were at least three or four of us interviewing. The other thing I should add, and I apologize if I left out. So if we, if we were to go down the filling of the seats through an interview process, or again, we could just choose someone, but if we were to interview, for transparency purposes, we, it would be held in public. So we could, you know, very easily also have, you know, a slate of questions. We could figure out how we wanted to do this, so that maybe they're, you know, quiet, another, you know, different rooms or something, or timed, so they're scheduled, so that the questions are presented to them with, you know, not knowing in advance or something, right? Fresh, and they could each be asked those questions equally and answer, give opportunity for that, and then, you know, the community could watch, depending on the situation, right? And we can, and then go into deliberation on, on how we want to decide who might best fill the seats. So that's just another thing, that's, if we were to do it in a, an alternative way to an election, where it's as much in the community and as, you know, kind of regulated as we can make it be, it could be kind of fair compromise to the situation. I do, personally, I do have concerns. I, I, you know, we see how the elections go in general. Like, you know, we're, we're in a tough year. If, I think if the world were just completely different, and finances were different, everything was different, but potentially $30,000, which again, we don't know what it would exactly be, but if it is, as, because right now, it's still, we have to send more ballots, it's still requiring for other elections and things. So if that's the case, it's a lot of money in a time when we're tight. So that's just, again, it's just, it's just a perfect storm of situations.
The state may to the city, it's kind of a 100%. So it's not a question, there will be money cut from them. I don't, that would mind. Hopefully, it's not 20% on the whole number, but we will not get the full 78 that we promised.
And I, and my recollection is that they can cut after the fact.
Yes.
So they can, you know, let's say it's 20%, they can decide two months from now, we're keeping another 10%.
Any additional, just not appropriate at this time.
And the thing is, on the third option, appointing, I mean, I would definitely not be in favor of like us just looking at names and being like, you know, eeny, meeny, miny, moe, obviously. We would definitely have to come up with some sort of process. You know, what you described is similar to the meet candidates night. You know, except that maybe we would do it separately. You know, so we would definitely go through some sort of process where we try to get to know the person. It's not that much different than how we handle an election. I mean, a lot of the time, the only time people hear from the candidates is meet candidates.
But the only other thing is Danny wasn't elected official. Krista wasn't elected official. I per, I don't feel that I have the right to appoint anybody to an elected official spot.
But we do have the right.
I, I'm just trying to, yeah, I'm just trying to, my view on it is, no. I don't want to appoint anybody to these slots, because the community has to be the people to make that choice.
Well, I think we're in a position to, we are in that position to make the appointment as a board. We're, we're given that role and that expectation. We are faced with a challenge right now, and it is, is really serious that we make the decision to actually put individuals in these two open seats. And I think, based off of the process that you're, that you're kind of describing solely right now, where we interview and similar to what Kerry's saying, we need the candidate type of a set, I think that is the right approach. I think as a board, we have to make that decision to identify the best qualified individuals right now to place on the board that would make it a full seven representation of this board. And again, based on circumstances that we're dealing with, that I've mentioned, diversity, equity, these things are critical right now in this community. You've had two forms, you've talked about it, and we really need to look at this in that, in that aspect of things. So I think it's a, I think we, as a board, do have that decision to make in the votes.
I should also add just another piece. If we didn't fill it, so let's say we thought the, how holding the special elections is too expensive, we'll just wait till the next official election. Another outcome of that could be, so the district superintendent, so that's who oversees all the component districts, meaning out of the VOSI superintendent, essentially, could also assign someone to the roll. I don't know how that would happen. I think it's the rarest of occasions that that does happen, but it's, so there could be measures that, you know, again, we could say that we're going to, you know, not fill it, and then people could say, force our hand in having an election. We could then fill the seats or hold an election as well. If this was, I just, my biggest concern is if we were at normal times, we could hold a normal election, people would show up, like, things would just...
Yeah.
We're just not in those times, and also, I'm really concerned about finances. It's a lot, it's a lot.
Eric said something before about the quorum changing. So we're a seven-person board, operating right now on five people. And let's, let's say we continue that way, we didn't fill the spots. If two of us don't make a meeting, no business can take place. Now, that doesn't happen very often with those of us in the room, but it is possible. And literally, nothing can take, no business can take place for the district. So that's a little disconcerting, I think, because there is that possibility, maybe a little bit less now, because a lot of us are working from home, so, but you know, that does happen, there are conflicts. So that's something that was triggered when, when you said that about the quorum.
That I would want to confirm. I know I told the saying, I would like to hear from the attorneys that that will be done in that fashion, because those two seats, while they are, we are a seven-person board, they have both resigned and then removed.
But we're, because we're not a five-person board.
And our policy simply stays seven, right? Let's speed that in there, but I would just want to confirm that with the attorneys, just to make sure, if we're using that as the reason we're doing it, I want to get from the attorneys that that's the reason, that that is valid for. I believe it is, but I just want to confirm it and have all the ducks in the row, that that is the reason.
Well, I mean, if that's going to, if you want to adjourn for that purpose.
Oh, I don't want to adjourn.
Well, we, if we need that answer, that's...
If we need to ask, we then have to.
Do you want me to email that? Or if you want me to give me his cell, or I can call, or is that...
Me, too.
Here, I'll give it, I'll give you the smile, I don't have a CS, you know?
I usually am pretty good here. Although, I don't, I...
I don't want to say that, can you see that?
I have a little bit mild at school.
And the question is, is that a quorum, whether or not a quorum occurs in the election?
We already said a seven-person board by policy, but both seats have to resign and it's official, and there will, is it still a voting process?
And Kerry, can you also ask, just sort of, in order for a motion to pass, we need a majority of the people who are here. I'm pretty sure this is Robert's, or we need a majority of the seats. So if it's, if it's, you need a majority of the quorum, it fails.
You have to have a quorum in order to do anything.
You have to have a quorum, just a majority.
And then it's the majority of the quorum.
You can clarify it.
All right, so say it again.
So, once we have, once we have a quorum, is it a majority of the quorum or is it a majority of the seats, in fact, for a motion to pass?
Yep, my understanding is that of the seats.
Okay.
If you have four, then all four have them.
Okay. I'll call him.
And I can...
Call him now.
Turn rogue.
You're being tested now.
I am. This is okay. I, I need to, I'm, I'm open to learning.
That's what we do, a lot of, I pray you just don't need to do that.
Do you have any other questions that you can think about the topic I was just calling?
On that, no. In my mind, either way, I'm still, in the actual fact, I believe that's the community's responsibility to fill that slot. Community didn't want the people in those slots. They, they didn't want, and I'm thinking, you know, I want, they didn't want... Um, community decided they didn't agree with Krista, so Krista left. The community decided, you know, those options, and Dan had to make the decision based upon his schedule, that he was not able to give the proper thought to the decision to me myself. So these are very important decisions, very important decisions. So we can say we appoint somebody, but it's us appointing, it's not the community. In my mind, the community has to, we have the right, we have the policy, we've done it before. But also, if I remember when you said that you were appointed, it was ugly.
It did, but that was because of...
Issues.
That were part of the process, that, like, meaning the interview, or just other...
Right, please.
Other factors.
I mean, what we're going to right now.
I mean, I think we need to accept the fact that there's going to be a group of people, there's going to be a group of people who think we should leave the met date, there's going to be a group of people who think we should, an election's going to be a group of people who think we should appoint. We can only do one of the three, so we're going to end up with two.
You know what, something's...
I mean, another way to look at it is, okay, so we were elected, we are still here, do represent the community, and based on that representation, we're speaking for them, we're throwing seats. But to what Kerry said earlier, we do face a possibility that we could be at a crucial meeting, and, you know, for whatever reasons, two people can't come, and no business takes place, and it just, so it's, um, which is why that time, that board decided, okay, five is really pushing it now. You know, if we have at least six and some misses, or, you know, the risk is...
I get it. I, for me, I just think it's a, I think we've put ourselves out there in the community with this open up the forum aspect, and we've invited the community to come out, and we are entertaining hearing what they're saying to us. And for us to not listen and sell this short, I think, is not going to be a good, a good result. I think you're going to lose a lot of people in the community. I said in my statement, we are a divided community right now. We can be covered even more divided if that decision is not pointed to some degree in that direction. And I know you say there's three groups, I agree with you 100%, but at the same time, we have to, we try to engage the community. We've got NYU coming in, and we're trying to foster the new way of how we're going to look at Brewster, how we're going to look at Brewster in general. And I think if we don't approach this the right way, I think we are going to open ourselves up for much greater conversation, much greater pressure. I just, I just honestly feel that way, so, yeah.
Yeah, I think, Scott, to your point, too. I also, I mean, on a philosophical sense, I understand what you're saying, these are elected positions, and they should be filled by elected people, but the two seats that are vacant, they weren't voted out. They weren't, they, those decisions were made by those people individually, that they needed to move on. Glenn Kanan served in the election, but he still got over 2,000 votes, or close to 2,000 votes of people who wanted him to remain. So I, I think, you know, if, if the first resignation had happened a few weeks prior, then we'd be filling one seat, you know, at this point. So, you know, I think that, you know, there's, in the majority of cases, absolutely, if the election happens, and those are the results that we go off of. But, you know, there are circumstances where it's just, you know, it's just, it's probably not practical under these circumstances to, to, you know, to run the election on, you know, make these decisions purely on philosophical basis.
I didn't get him. I love to voicemail, but if you wanted, I can send in a text with the two questions. Okay, so I wanted us to coordinate the questions, so...
Yeah, just so, one, since we are five, we did not fill the seats.
Right.
Do we function, what constitutes a quorum?
Another quorum, I think, sure.
And then if, you know, only four people are here, are we, you know?
So if we don't fill two seats, well, we know, oh...
And we are five. What constitutes a quorum? And, and what's the majority of those who are present at a meeting? Is it three, or five, or four, or something?
Basically, if you're, if you're seven, and you only have five, basically, two people say something.
Yeah, you're done.
Every time. Seven would be four.
Uh, what's a quorum, so the choices are two? Okay. Okay, and then? That's it?
Yeah, that was the same question, right?
Seven, okay. Yeah, seven. Okay.
If the vote just numbered, can you answer?
Did you say it's Carrie?
I did.
Yes, it's Carrie.
Okay. And I left the same one on his, but if he can text, then I can read it directly. So. Okay, we don't, we'll see to keep two open. What's a quorum? Three out of five, four to seven, what's the majority to pass? Three out of five, four to seven, four to seven. Okay?
That's a five.
Okay.
So. Uh, can I ask Scott, what, um, how does that factor into your decision of thinking on the matter? Would you say you need the answer? So.
And that's just more information. In my, in my opinion, the slots need to be filled by election. Since we can't have an election in September. Well, not if we can't, we shouldn't have elections in September. Those seats have failed. And so we need next election.
Oh, we can have elections. So are you for an election or for leaving them open?
I'm for an election today. I don't.
So you're for leaving them open now?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't mind, but with all the circumstances, I'm still 100% I don't need the answer.
Okay. Anyone else? Just, you mentioned you're fulfilling them now and figuring out a process for that.
Oh, yeah. Um, as I said, it's, uh. I, leaving a voice saying diversity, and that's something that I'm going to echo very loud. Um, this community is very diverse. It's, I mean, we need to have more involvement from that, that aspect. Um, I think we need to really consider this. Um, like I said, the forum was very, very telling. People came out, there were people of interest that are looking to step up and fulfill these roles. And, you know, I think we need to be fair, you know, have a process in place that we can use initially to make the best decision. And I think, uh, right now the community is watching us and they, they need to, they hope they make the right decision. I'm not going to say that we're, our hands are being forced. But you guys know the temperament that we're dealing with right now. They are looking for an opportunity to become involved in more than just one branch. So.
I would just add on that front. I mean. Um, I, I agree that there is clearly a push for diversity and then, I mean, we've talked about this. Well before what's going on right now. So this is not a new concept. Um, you know, we represent, we, we understand we represent all the kids that go to the school and it would be, you know, it would be good to see the table. Represent all the kids that go to the school if it's possible. We, you can't make people run and sometimes that's an issue getting people to step up and run. Other times we've had, you know, a, a lot of people do it. But, you know, I, anytime you have an opportunity where people are showing interest that maybe hasn't been shown. From them or from anyone in the past, I think I view as an opportunity. Um, and the goal would be to appoint, if we were to go that route, to appoint two people that we think would do the best job. As, on the school board. You know, so it's, it, we would still be factoring in all the types of things that we always think of personally or collectively as what would make a good. School board member. That would, that would be the, my primary. You know, where I would be coming from is who would make a good school, school woman, particularly here where, like, we're taking on that. Role of, of selecting, of selecting a person. So. I mean, I, I'm not, I already said, I'm not in favor of a good election. The cost is too much. We've already talked about. The need to, you know, cut, cut things and, and I, I can't see putting this on, on, on top of all the other things that we're going to deal with next year. Um, and the fact that it's for a year, that eases my. Concern about appointing people. A year, you could say a year is long. It, it's also really, really short. Um, you know, would I want to appoint someone to a three-year term? No. But this is one year. And it's, these are not circumstances that we created. These are things, this is something that the board has to address and we're going to do the best that we can to do it. I think that the third option of appointing for the one-year period is the best option.
For both?
In line of the circumstances. If we, if we didn't have the coronavirus and we could have an election, I think I would probably. A regular election that has some costs associated with, but not quite the costs that we just went through. I would, I'd probably feel a little different. But right now, in the circumstances, I'm more in favor of appointing.
So. So for me, I, when it was, you know, one seat, I was thinking, okay, you know, we can, we can go till next May, one seat, maybe not fill it. Um, and I was juggling that idea. And now with two seats, um, I do think we run the risk of, um. Just five is, is, is low.
So we would need four people to make the motion and to adopt anything. So it's four out of seven. Yeah. Um, so really, one of us is not here. Right? If we didn't fill, we have five. No, then you have four.
We have four.
You're risking two without the.
And then on a vote, it's, it's, it's a majority of the form on, on, on an action item. It's majority of the form.
Four out of seven for both.
We still function as.
Yeah. Yeah. So.
All right. Um, so for me, when it was one, I, I was kind of on the fence, thinking, okay, we could maybe get by with six, knowing that. With two, um, I, I went now towards maybe for filling them. Um, and then I thought, maybe two, both or one, and if we're going to fill one, just fill the two. And again, it's for, you know, 10 and a half months. I hate to put it this way. I mean, yes, a lot of business does happen, but it's less than a year. July, we org is just all the technical stuff, all that we do, uh, year after year. Um, August, we have. Um, one meeting. We usually do a, a board retreat. And, um. You know, and then we start from September to May, uh, beginning of May, early end of, you know, April. So, I mean, and a lot of stuff happens in those months. But, um, yes, I, I, so I'm leaning toward filling them also. And I think that if, like Carrie said, you know, we set criteria, uh, we come up with our questions. And we could figure out what they would be and everyone gets them. And we, we, we select people who. We feel represent, you know, or willing to work with representing all the kids of the district. Um, you know, we've done many retreats already in the past and had conversations about, you know. People who come across with singular perspectives or agendas don't always, you know, um. Work in terms of what's best for all kids. So we can take all those things into account and, you know. Then we represent the community and they've entrusted us to, to do that. And districts do this all the time. You know, they replace the seats. Um, I would hate to be, you know, make the news again that the commissioner has to come in and. Force us to hold an election or that, you know, for the first time, Boise is filling our seats for us. Um, I'd rather be proactive than that because there, I don't know, there could be percentage, third, a third, a third. It could be some different percentage and, and that could happen, that a greater percentage feels, you know, they didn't agree and. And force our hand in a different way. Um, but they can't do that if we, if we choose to fill the seats. So. I'm also just trying to avoid the potential of the backlash of not filling them, which is also. A real possibility. You know, people may say you failed. We are a seven-member trustee district and we want seven people sitting here. Um, and force our hand, which would, I think, we force even. I don't know. We have no way of predicting that. But I do think we could do a very responsible job. And we have to outline it all for the community. So if we send that information out. Um. It would be very clear to them what to expect, what the integrity of the process would be. And, um, and, and then also hear people who answer the questions for us themselves. So we don't have to do it that way, but I think that would be the most. Respectful way to try to accomplish the goal.
Well, and, and I completely understand where you're coming from, Scott, with, you know, we're, we're elected. That's, that's how we get you and completely understand that. Um, but we have been elected. And we are entrusted to do a lot of things that are very important to this district, including hiring a superintendent. Um, you know, so I feel like, and we, as we know. Put a lot of effort and time and work into doing that the best that we could. So I, I certainly think that we are capable of selecting two people who would. You know, fill these roles sufficiently. And we're entrusted to hire the leader of the district. I think. That that, you know. And it transposes over to this particular limited situation, which we're probably not able to face again.
And, and I don't know how, how we can also, I'm just taking off some of you just mentioned, we are entrusted to hire the superintendent. Even if you look at that process, how we hire a superintendent, you know, have a committee. Have the committee review the, the potential candidates that we're going to meet with and then have them come in, interview with us. And we get the same feedback process that we went through and then commit the termination that way. So we're giving, we, we're giving the community the opportunity to be involved. In decision making. So based off of the feedback that somebody provided to us, I, I think that would be a better.
Well, I think in the.
If that works.
In the, um. I think filling who'd be on that committee could become problematic, but everyone would be able to watch the, um, interviews.
If you could do it random, like he did with the superintendent, people just put their name into the pot. And your number got drawn. And if you got drawn, you were on the committee that got interviewed with the superintendent. And that would be totally neutral. That's the way I believe we're coming.
The only concern I have is all, all of that's always advisory.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you.
And, um.
But it's just.
It's, it could be another. True, but it could also be another area that we open ourselves up to worse criticism. Um. You know, I think that if people watch the interview process and just from that observation, we have an email set up. And they could possibly send in thoughts that way that we review from the community at large that way. I think that can achieve the same intention.
Yeah.
Without forming a committee.
More like America's got town, you know. You look at the screen, you see the guy and you vote. I mean, if they get, the, the community gets to meet in whatever fashion with the candidates. And of course, give an opinion. It's just an opinion. And then you'll still interview them and those interviews will still be. Showed on the thing. So that's, all aspects are covered. The community is actually about that piece and then watching the board be involved in these.
With the superintendent search, though, the committee was not able to say. We want.
Right.
Correct.
We don't want B.
Right.
And we really don't want C or whatever. They were able to give comments on responses to questions or topics.
So that's what we do.
They were not able to, you know.
Make that.
Tell us who they wanted. Yeah.
Right, so they don't, they don't, okay. Same with that fashion. They just make comments based upon the answers they get from the interviews. Well, I mean, I think if we decide that we're going to go with the appointment route, then we can kind of drill down.
Right.
Because there's a big difference between an appointed board member who will represent one-seventh of, and eventually there's two seats, but one-seventh of the entire decision-making body. And the superintendent who we're going to, it's a full-time paid position and it's going to be, you know, like, I, I, I'm. I'm, I'm okay. You know, I, I brought up the election piece because to me, $30,000 for one seat. Seemed like too much. But if you knock it down to 15,000 per seat, it's still a lot of money. It's still money we don't necessarily have, but I thought it was worth considering. So I wasn't necessarily trying to push for the election. But I think if we decide we're going to a point, you know, I think some community input is. Is okay, but the community has input already. If there's enough time between the interviews and the, people can send in their comments. Send in emails to the entire board and say, when they said this, this is what I thought and therefore I think they'd make a great candidate. Or when they said that, I thought that was a terrible answer and they should be eliminated. Because, believe me, we read all these emails.
Yeah.
So, you know, and I'm more than happy to have, but eventually it comes down to. We need to make a decision. And I think, you know, I, I don't think that, I don't think the town is broken down a third, a third, a third. I just think those are the three potential camps that work. I think most people probably expect us in this, in this climate and with coronavirus to make these appointments.
Right.
I, I mean, I, I, you know, the fact that there are other, the fact that there are other ways out there, to me, I could see sort of when you would go, okay. I understand why we would do that.
And, and I agree, I agree with you 100%. I'm, I'm just looking to make this thing as fair as possible. Of course, if, you know, that's, if that's a better solution, which I'm okay with as well. That, that's fine with me. I mean, if, if you, if you allow the community to, we're allowing the community access anyhow to see what's happening. And if they want to give input at that time afterwards or send us an email, like we said, I'm okay with that. If it takes X amount of emails that we've got to read them, so be it. You know, but at least, you know, that's an alternative versus if we, the other one that I, I threw out there as well. So.
I think it's also more, so I mean, we could do full numbers, but this gives everyone access, really.
True.
Whoever wants to take the time to participate.
Please go ahead.
Right, but it would, yeah.
So then, have we decided? Are we moving forward? Are we talking about now we're going to a point two and now we're going to talk about sort of. What that's going to look like? Or are we still sort of deciding what, what our way forward is going to be?
I mean, I think it sounds like we're leaning toward filling the two seats. Um, and then just what we need to do about that. So. Um. And I think again, that we should have a very formalized process. And I know that, you know, just to comment for, for the community that's listening and watching tonight. People have sent in, um, um, comments and some have had interest. Uh, but however we lay out the process, we would want everyone to go through that process equally.
Efficiently.
Efficiently and appropriately. Yeah. So, um.
I mean, and I, I think it's been helpful to, to this discussion and the decision that we make, knowing that, you know, we at least, it's not as if we're going to have one person for two seats. You know, to know that there is community interest in the decision and that's extremely helpful to knowing that, you know, there may be. Three more people, maybe a few people who sent emails to say that, now I see the other people who are doing it and I'm good for one of those against it. When, you know, one of those people got it. So. I mean, I think it's been helpful, but yeah, I think, I think once we make the decision that this is what the process is going to be, we start from scratch. And we take nothing for granted.
Right, yeah, I agree, I agree.
Um, okay, so with that, um. We can, if we can get a general outline, um, as to what we'd like to do and then like drill it down to the specifics, we can, we can, you know, put that together in the. Outline that we sent to the community. But just in general. Um, so do we all agree, really agree on interviewing and having a process for interviewing? Yes, having people come?
Yes.
Because, because another option could be, again, they submit through some formal process, we ourselves review, but we all discuss it. We think it'd be fair.
I'm sorry, I hate to, hate to get particular, but when you say interview, we're talking about a face-to-face or an in-person sort of. Process, whether that's similar to meeting candidates where we ask questions down the line or we take them in more than time.
They sit there in front of us and answer questions on camera.
But you might have to give people the option to zoom.
Or zoom.
Right, same.
Of course.
Same. I wanted to apply, but then they didn't come in.
Yeah, no, no. Or if they're in Zoom, then exactly, then they're, you know, absolutely.
So yes, I would, I would expect that there should be some kind of, yes.
Oh, yeah.
You did it for, we do it for all of our vendors and all of our service providers. I think that's definitely.
Okay. Um. So. Then, do we need resumes or would a, um, letter of interest, and maybe we can come up with criteria that they should have to identify? Or just we get open to whatever they want to tell us? Do we want to be that specific?
I don't think necessarily needs to be a, a resume, but some sort of.
Yeah, save you, save me.
Yourself, first, reason why.
The town have, uh, our tax office or the taxpayers, they don't require a resume. They say, you ran a letter into us, tell us you're just, what is your.
Which, which.
What, what about you makes you a quick fit for that position?
So that's the thing. So is that a question? Is that, and we leave it open to them?
Yeah, I would probably leave it open to them, but I would, I would expect them, as they're submitting that stuff to us, just give us an overview of yourself and why.
We need to say what.
Why, what that vision is, why are you, why are you interested in being on the board? What is it that you're, that you're looking to accomplish? Because we're going to, we're going to still interview them with questions that's going to tie around that anyhow. So.
Just like at work, you get to pile the resumes. First you go through, look for certain keywords, look for people like this guy, like. I mean, you can look right away. I'm something that was, all I want is to make the fields the best in the world. Okay, obviously you're not fit at the moment, you're not fit at the things, you know, we can sort of do a little preliminary sorting. It's not like you have to grant every single person an interview. The ERAS agents could take.
Yeah, that's another, yeah. I think that we do have to have.
Process.
I think, listen, if three people end up applying, then we can have interviews. If we get it.
If you're twenty.
Nine, ten, twenty.
I mean, you can't.
We're going to need to make an initial determination.
Yeah.
Okay, what, what do we?
I don't know if there's a magic number, but.
Yeah, do we have, can we agree on a number that we think if we get, we'll, we'll interview in person? How are we, are we open to interviewing in person or live?
Now we determine it on votes, we have to vote on whether we want to put one spot, two slots, how does this procedure go?
So it's just a conversation and our consensus is the agreement? So do we agree on filling both two spots or, or one?
I'm sure.
Two.
I'm sure.
Two. Okay.
I'll be against that. I'm, I'm a rule guy, so I have to flow back to the, I don't believe this process should exist. I'll participate, I'll be involved and I have to stick.
That's okay.
That's probably made me weird.
No, I, I agree, I mean, I, I say that all the time, I'm a rule person. But the rule gives us the power to do this, you know.
Everybody has an interpretation.
Yeah.
Okay, so do we have, how many, should we, if we get, you know?
We already saw over ten people.
So, so probably ten or fifteen, you get the range.
Interview?
Interview, interview in person?
That's.
No, no, what you said, ten?
How many, if we get ten, are we interviewing all ten or are we interviewing five or three?
Do we feel comfortable, and this is just a thought.
It's for two seats.
It is for two seats.
Do we feel comfortable? I don't even know if I should say this. Do we feel?
You can't go anywhere.
Just say it, just say it.
You could damn it, I don't know. You don't want to go like this.
Just say it.
So we talked about some sort of community input. So do we feel comfortable allowing the community to call the number to a certain point? If it gets beyond, if we get ten interest letters, I don't think we can responsibly engage ten people in this process. But do we then potentially give the community the chance to say, here's the ten, give us the best six, give us the best five?
How are you going to do that?
I mean, still.
No, I think we.
Well, no, I mean, it would be a, it would be a.
Yeah, I think we have to set that. Yeah, we just have to go to, we have to go through, scrub, scrub what's given to us and we just got to make that decision when we go, you know, I'm, I'm okay with five, but I, I don't know what's on mine in the future of seven. That's, I just like the number seven.
Yeah, I know that.
Well, we could always have a range, a minimum of five and, or a minimum of some number and a maximum.
Yeah, let's, you know what, that's true. We might forget that and really not be able to determine from what we're reading, because we might want to. So.
And I, and I also think that when we do interview the people, we need to have, you know, questions that we agree on and focus six questions.
This is the other thing.
Not twenty-five and we're not interviewing people for two hours. You know what I mean, these are, these are fifteen, twenty-minute interviews.
Well, if we're running out of time, I mean.
Yeah, that's the problem.
There's some people that travel plans or you tell me from your house to your family, but there's other things going on.
There are, yeah. So it'll become too cumbersome. So I think between the five of us, we should be able to agree on.
So let's see how many come in and.
Say roughly five to seven, unless, unless we absorb it and not come in and everything.
Okay.
I mean, that we could leave. Some, we could leave that in the air. Once we see how to show it.
Yeah, we do.
And we'll work on the questions, we'll keep those, I'm thinking probably confidential until that night. And we'll figure out how to do that.
Are there any questions by the interns?
I would think there would be two. And then we can come up with, and we, we don't have to do this right now, I don't think we can, unless we have those ideas and just they have it now, like what questions do we want to put? You know, we even said, what, you know, what do you believe, what qualities do you have that would make you a good candidate?
Describe an experience where it showed you're a good board or something like that.
Is that, is that, are we your questions?
No, this is, this is.
No, no, no.
This is for their statement of interest, just prompt them. You know, please submit a statement of interest that indicates your something.
Except when the town, when all the groups are out here doing it, it's very basic.
Yeah.
And they want to put in as much or as little as they choose.
Right, exactly.
And then you can know the character or their real interest by what they're saying.
Always watch yourself and stuff like that.
Come on, when you were dating somebody and they said, well, I am out.
Yeah.
Limit on it?
Okay, then we get to, that's a job, that's a job.
Work out.
Okay, so we can work something like that, just to prompt them. And then we'll come up with the questions.
And then I, just in terms of like timeframe, because that may impact some people and their will, their willingness and their ability to show their interests, like, so if we're going to do this, we would want a statement of interest, you know, like a timeline, a statement of interest by X date.
Yeah, cut off time.
Board makes it, board makes a decision as to who inter, will be interviewed, you know, within a week. I mean, it, it can't drag out.
Correct.
Yeah, we got to get cut, cut off dates.
And technically, just we didn't say this, or like, we don't have a timeline if we, for any of this, would it, it's, the election's the only thing that has a statement, a timeline. For the rest, this doesn't, but I think we all agree.
It doesn't help to.
That we would like to just.
No, if you're going to do it, you have to.
It would, it would be nice if we could do it by the August meeting, but certainly by the first meeting in September. I mean, we only have.
I think we can get this done by.
By the August meeting, yeah.
Because especially with Zoom, everybody, everyone can, I think, walk from somewhere. And then this, you know, maybe a week timeline also for, so if we put it out there, we'll open up, the submission can be a week long. And then from there, we'll take a week to review and then we'll set up the interviews for that next week. And then we can give the community a week to respond and take a week of time, you know.
What you do next week is the submission, so between the sixth and the tenth is everything being submitted. Then that gives you the thirteenth to the seventeenth to review, call things, schedule. And then the last, let's say the twentieth to the twenty-fourth is the interview period. And that gives you time after the interviews are over or released for the next August meeting.
Yes, that timeline could work. August, the August meeting is Monday again?
Maybe you work to the organization, you know, sort of plan on the dates.
It's on the website right now, I just didn't, it's not in my phone yet. It'll be the eighteenth or something, you have to check. But it definitely would give us enough time to get it all done.
Week, a week, a week.
By the eighteen, yeah. Okay, so then we can send out the outline of the days as well with what'll take place with each week.
So, right.
Okay, so if we kind of have a good outline, and we'll just come up with some questions we'll work on and then we can figure out logistically, once we narrow it down, how, how we do the interview. We can set the, and I'm assuming we can even, we'd have a special meeting for that purpose. And we're giving this a lot of time also. I mean, I think when they do it, it feels like thinking like one night.
Yeah.
Or is it, was it a whole week, it was all?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's no reason that we can't get this done.
So we can get this done, absolutely. Okay, so I think we're good. Are there any more questions or thoughts? I mean, it looks like we've come to some agreement on how to tackle this. Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, then I think we're done.
The next thing that will go out is some sort of, one other thing. So the statement of interest, so we need to convey this to people. This is the process and if you're interested, we can't just be done through backpack.
Yeah.
So.
So it normally, everything is noticed, so our district clerk does notice, the newspapers, anytime we do things like this, I can,
Yeah, fine.
we can absolutely put that.
Yeah, to the district clerk and then they can have social media.
Yep, social media, it'll go out.
Yep.
Somebody reads backpack and stuff.
Papers.
Well, and, and we, you know, it's not, it's not exclusively to people who get backpacks, you know what I mean?
Absolutely, right.
Well, it could maybe distribute through the, Dr. Randall thinks you will do the key communicate then.
Yeah, I would say we, we can get it out every, every way possible.
Yeah, yeah. And honestly, they really just need to know the, the statement of interest and due date, because once they do that, then they'll be included in the rest of the timing, yeah.
Okay, so, perfect, so what I'll do is I'll, you can, we type or recap this for all of us and then we'll just put together a letter, we'll send it out to the community. And it'll include the next steps for anyone interested to take and then we'll go from there. Yeah, is there anything we're missing, need to say, anything to?
Well, also now that you've established the process and the initial letter, everything else is going to be sent out. So there is more time, as long as you get the initial piece out, those other things can be filed as you go along. So if you missed something tonight, you still have.
Yeah. Absolutely.
No, I think, I think we covered everything, everything so far. There's always room for adjustments, but I think we're, I think we're, we covered everything.
Okay. Okay, good, so I think that we can adjourn our work session. I would just need a motion to do so, Scott, thank you. Hold on, hold on, I just, nope, Secretary.
No, Glenn Scott did the last one.
Okay, second, thank you for the last one. All is in favor to adjourn our work session? All five of us, hands raised, no objections, motion passes to adjourn our work session. It is seven forty-five.
Yep.
Exactly now. Okay, thank you so much, everyone, and thank you everyone for watching. We're good.
Try the sun.